Hey Ben, is there more chairs in the room?
I think we have more.
Okay. Yep.
Anybody else need to sign in for this hearing that has not?
There's a chair here, there, and there if anybody needs it.
Time is 2:34 April 4, 2023. I will briefly go over how we're going to proceed with this hearing. Please remember, this is an official proceeding prescribed by Idaho Code. This proceeding is taped as part of an official public record. We ask that each speaker state your name and place or residence before doing testimony. The hearing will begin with applicant's statement, which in this case is applicant. Applicant is James and Alida Byler. When the floor, then the floor will be open to allow comments from members of the public. First, from those who are in favor of the proposal. Next, from those who are neither in favor or opposed to the proposal. And finally, from those who are opposed to the proposal. They, and they will be given three minutes per speaker. After each person speaks, members may ask questions of the speaker.
So Marley, for the record, just a couple of other things. The Chair summarized the usual way to do a hearing. This is also an under appeal hearing because one of the individuals, Cameron Smith, didn't receive notice due to the fact that he had purchased after we had sent or prepared the labels. So that's why this is being heard again, to ensure that there's a proper due process for this. And so at the end, when the rebuttal is given to the applicant, and Mr. Smith also has a right of rebuttal at that very end, we also have a couple of exhibit requirements to be aware of. First of all, if you have an exhibit, it can only be a single page. And it will need to come through this area to be given an exhibit number and it's passed to the Chair for him to summarize or distribute as is appropriate. So here on the board are a couple of reminders. We have, the exhibits have to be readable. They can't be like a compact disc that you give to the Board of Commissioners because they can't obviously read or hear that immediately. And they have to be reproducible so that we can have those in the record in case anyone ever needs those again. And they're kept for our records, so be prepared to give those to us or send those to us for us to keep. If you have a photograph, we can be giving you a copy back of that at least if you need that photo back. I think that was the summary of that, Mr. Chairman?
Now I open this, open the public hearing for the county commissioners to consider the planning and zoning application 22-0183. This is an application for conditional use permit questioned by applicants James and Alida Byler. This is a proposal upon which county commissioners will render decision. Franzen, our county commissioners, and our deputy clerk. Is there any member of this commission who has a conflict of interest and cannot participate in the hearing? If so, please step down. And none?
None.
Myself, none. Now we will ask for the staff report.
Okay, thank you, Tessa Vogel for the records. So this is a conditional use permit for a commercial use that has a primary structure that's over 15,000 square feet. If it was 15,000 square feet or less, then you wouldn't be hearing this. It is outright permitted use in a commercial light industrial zone. So a little bit of information, as you saw in your staff reports, there's some writing in red and some writing in black. So due to this being heard again, there's information that might be new. That's going to all be in red. Everything that was heard at the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing or written on staff report, that's everything that was in black. So like I was saying, this is a conditional use permit for a commercial use, which is for an actual tractor supply store. And their structure is going to be over 15,000 square feet. This was approved back on October 27th of last year by the Planning and Zoning Commission with conditions. But this is now a de novo process, so you are hearing this new because of the issue with the noticing. So the standards for review for a conditional use permit are found at section 7.7. This is also going to be in your standards and analysis that's later in the staff report. We just have that outlined for you here, but you can reference it later. Little overview, so this is the aerial of the property where that green star is. That's the actual site. This is in the commercial light industrial zone. It is within the airport overlay area nor, uh, not normally. Originally, it was planned by the applicants to be served by Three Mile Water District. After the completion of your staff report, we were notified that they are actually going to be doing private wells in the septic instead of Three Mile Water. They are proposed to have four employees, an average of 75 to 90 customers a day. Be open eight to eight Monday through Saturday and then nine to six on Sundays. This is just a little, this is the airport flight pattern. The little yellow star is the approximate location of this property, just so you can see that. This is the staff report that was submitted for the property and for the project. This is showing it as the smaller portion for what would be planned as a future land division if the process were to go through. So they do show it on what is the proposed actual size for the property. A little bit of zoomed in here so you can see. So we are meeting our setbacks. We have that required parking that you have in your staff report under the analysis. There's a lot going on on there and the applicant can definitely speak to other aspects of this during their presentation. We have the floor plan of the proposed structure. You can see that it's just over 19,000 square feet. Large retail space with some offices on there. And then they also do have the outside storage where that parking area is. So back in October, that's where you don't see any snow. I took some photos of the access and the road when I was doing the site postings. So we have at the northwest corner of the property, we're looking into the property itself towards the highway. And then we have Homestead Loop. You can just kind of see the quality of the road then. Now we're looking more at the intersection coming off of the highway and then looking on towards Hillcrest, which is the way we get out towards our dump. And so you can see it's a paved road. There are intersections with other roads there. So we did route originally for the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, but we did route again for this hearing. We received only an updated comment from Roden Bridge and a new comment from ITD. The airport stated that they would like to have the fair disclosure statement, which has been completed so far. And then they also said that there won't be any upward facing lights permitted. The assessor didn't have any concerns as long as infrastructure could be dealt with. Pandango Health District at that time didn't have any records. They didn't provide an updated comment if the applicants had contacted them and started that process with them yet. Roden Bridge provided an updated comment in regards to the road approach variances, that those had been approved with conditions and provided to us, those put into the file. We did have some draft conditions for approval updated with this. Previously had stated that the applicant would have to get those approaches done. So because they've done that, we have manipulated those and updated them with the new necessities. Let's see here. So it is a long document, so I wasn't going to put everything in the slideshow for you, but I did provide it for you in the staff report packets that you received, that full comment and the original comment from Roden Bridge. ITD, after the completion of your staff report, provided their comments. They said they're neutral on this, but that they would like to see some improvements for that intersection area where you're coming off the highway onto Homestead. This includes increasing the length of the northbound turn lane that's turning left onto Homestead, adding the markers and then illumination at that intersection just to make everything more visible. We did route to public, to the public back in October for this, and we didn't receive any written public comment then or up to the completion of the staff report. We also didn't receive any comments at that hearing. For the routing this time around, we did receive some comments in favor of the post. Those in favor just are wanting to see this store closer to them so they're not having to go to Coral Lane and would like to support local businesses instead of businesses in the Coral Lane area. We had some concerns and those opposed to the traffic on Homestead, that intersection and that just feeling that this type of structure wasn't the right fit for that area in the commercial zone. Same kind of conditions regarding the vehicle trips per day. And then there was one note that staff wanted to make in regards to one of the opposition comments was regarding the moderate use. The comment stated that this was in violation of that. This is actually not in the moderate use at all. We don't look at it that way. The commercial light industrial zone specifically calls out that any structure for commercial uses 15,000 square feet or larger requires a conditional use permit. That's the regulation. Also based off its size, it's automatically out of that moderate use, it's a high occupancy at a minimum. So that is a moot point essentially. But we wanted to clarify that in case that caused some confusion. After the staff report, we did receive another in favor stating that they would like to see the tractor supply store here in our local community. So in regards to the zoning, this is our county zone map. So you can see that the dark pink where the site is located, I'll show up right here. This light, the neon pink really, is all of the commercial light industrial zone. This purple is industrial solely. This is the airport itself. And then this zoning in the light pink, this is the rural residential area. Because there was some comments about that there's residential in the area and this doesn't fit or feel like it would go along with what's already there. And so uses are based off of the zone. So what's, what is zoned is what they allow there. So staff did do some research. This is new from the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing about when these areas were zoned and why. So I actually have these files with me. I dug them out, had a little dust on them. But first, for the commercial light industrial zone that we know in that area, that has been like that since at least 1989. That was the first time that we're seeing it in an application. It was zoned prior to that application, obviously. But we see in the Northland Woods subdivision, which is right up in here. This was a commercial subdivision that they did. These are actually all plotted except for the Smith property. And on that application, they actually had a printout of the for commercial use on there. And so it did state in that that it's been zoned commercial. We later changed it to commercial light industrial sometime around 2006. We can't exactly pinpoint that exact date, but that's when the name light industrial was added. So other than that, we do have the David Thompson Road area is all that commercial zone. It's been that since the late eighties at least. And we do have the final number, that's 1-90103. But they don't mention the surrounding properties. They do however, mention them in the Northern Heights subdivision, but that's only for the adjacent properties. That's not anything beyond what touches them. We'll see that in the next slide, which is this one right here. This was out of the future Northern Heights subdivision file. So this was back in 2006 is what file this is out of. At that time, Northern Woods subdivision had already been completed. And now we see that the blue is all the commercial zone, including this site. So now we see it on an actual map in 2006 that was in that file. The yellow is rural residential. The green is Ag or Suburban is what it was then. Prior to 2006's subdivision file, the future Northern Heights subdivision area went through a zone change to make it yellow slash rural residential. So we do see also in 2006, this has been commercial. It's been like this quite a long time. The white and purple areas were not designated. The purple does include the airport and some industrial areas, so most likely that's what it was. So pages seven through nine of your staff report, we have our analysis on there. We also put in some relevant definitions for the proposal. Those are on page three. That's where we're looking at the uses and those classifications like high occupancy and moderate uses. You also have on your staff report, we just threw in the section for the appeals because that's how we got here today. But we have our allowances of the commercial light industrial zone, your authority to impose conditions, which we have another slide to kind of help explain that in regards to off-site improvements. And then our findings and conclusions. We'll go through all these with you, but we do have a clarification for your motion for an amendment because of the information that came in regarding the services. Number eight, where it does state that the site is to be served by Three Mile Water District, that's no longer the plan. It's private well, so it would be to amend it to reflect that change. And then we have two new findings and conditions on there. We included the information from Roden Bridge regarding their variances and that the applicant has in fact completed their fair disclosure statement with the airport. This is that slide I was speaking to, the terms and conditions breakdown from your county code, just about the type of conditions that you can put onto a project. And we tried to shorten this up, so we didn't have tons of slides on them. But we do have information in there about the, where is this? Number seven? Yeah. Number five. Establish specific locations under standards for structures, parking areas, access lanes, etc., to reduce adverse impact on traffic or traffic patterns. So that comes into play if you are wanting to include ITD's requirements for those highway approaches, because that's actually not an access onto the site, but it's in regards to the impact on traffic. Draft conditions for approval, those are all the same, except we do have some new additions or some changes because of the variances that went on after the Planning and Zoning Commission in regards to those road accesses. So we have on there that the applicant now shall comply with the approved conditions of their variances, that both approaches shall be constructed prior to the occupancy of the structure. And what that means is you have to have that done before this building can start functioning as a tractor supply store. So you don't have to have it done while you're building, because that's when you'll probably be doing it. But prior to it actually going live, if you approve this, those approaches and everything will have to be completed. And then lastly, number nine, those are ITD's, what they have as recommendations slash requirements if you're wanting to do that. That would be up with Homestead. The, well, the intersection of Homestead, Homecrest and the highway is where they're talking about. So that three-way intersection that you saw in those photos. And that concludes my presentation for the staff report. Do you have any questions for me?
Renee, would you like to give what bridge?
Yes. So Renee Nelson with Roden Bridge. So with ITD's comments, those were recommendations. I did verify with ITD to find out what their recommendations meant and also what Roden Bridge could do. The lengthening of the northbound turn lane, the pavement markings are done usually by ITD with their striping crew. And so their traffic engineer was going to verify that they could get their crew to do that once this was approved or if approved. So that would probably not be a condition. I don't know that way. The pavement markings on Homestead to delineate the traffic lanes and the stop bars, we will be working with ITD to get an agreement or a policy in place. If we do do stop bar markings at Homestead and the Highway 95 intersection and any kind of lane delineation on Homestead Loop, ITD will allow us to work in there right away, but we will be the ones that would have to take care of the big marking as well as the upkeep of the paint marking. And as far as illumination goes, they were still needing to do some more looking into that. Generally, on past developments, they said that illumination sometime could be paid by the developer, but then you have to determine who maintains it, who pays the cost of the electricity. And it kind of seemed at this time that maybe we didn't have enough answers to really look at that, but that would be something in the future that we could definitely be working on for illumination of that intersection as that whole area seems to be expanding. The other thing I did was check with our local highway technical assistance council as far as the roadway. Right now, we have 11-foot lanes, which are standard for a regular county volume road. We did look into the possibility of adding at least some two-foot gravel shoulders to the area. So that is something that Roden Bridge thought we would like to do in conjunction with this. The other thing the technical council mentioned was for truck traffic, that approach at radiuses can be widened. And as part of the variance hearings, that southern approach into the traffic store was widened to thirty, from a 30-foot radius to a 55-foot radius. So they felt that we were definitely covering the approach with, to allow trucks in and out, to get out, get in their lane, turn some of the road into the, to the tractor supply parking lot and that it was pretty much meeting what normal engineering was required.
Okay.
Did I ask for any questions?
Sure.
So of the list, which are of those are items that the applicant would be responsible for versus ones that you're coordinating would be in?
None of them.
None of them. So you would, so it would be not as easy to be imposed?
No.
That would be my recommendation.
No.
So should I, is what you're saying? Does he, that's your answer? That time?
Are there any questions for the staff?
None.
So the lighting at the intersection, is that going to be a potential mandate from the state if that happens?
No, they were saying it was a recommendation, but they didn't have a good enough policy in place as far as if we have the developer put the lighting up, then who's going to maintain it? Who's going to pay for that? And if it was a coordination, depending on where it was, it's in ITD's right of way versus county road right of way. So pretty much they felt they needed to look into that a little bit more, but it was a good idea they thought for that. But just kind of like they're doing on 95 towards the intersection at Three Mile, they're getting more illumination along there. So it would definitely help, but they couldn't answer how we went about it, even if we put a condition on that, how would we condition that? Because there are different rules for Idaho Code to follow.
Sure. So in the future, if they wanted light there, then the state would purchase and place the light?
They don't know that for sure. That's what they didn't know for sure exactly. Or rather, it would be on the county road and bridge or on a future development. That's the kind of part we were missing from that.
So other questions? Okay. Now will the applicants, please step forward and give an opening statement.
Thank you. I'm Jennifer Mallanger. I'm here to represent Hickstentic Development Company. We're the developing company that is buying the property from investors. Thank you for having me back. As I stated the last time, we're the developer for the tractor supply project. We are under contract.
We can't hear you, ma'am.
We are under contract to purchase the property.
Wait, Jennifer? Can you speak to them? Maybe you'll just have to stop.
You can stand here. I'll stand back here.
You're, you're speaking to a slot in the ground.
Okay. I have a slot voice to begin with, so. I represent the developer of the project. My company is Hickstentic Development. We are a developer for Tractor Supply Store, so I'm not here to represent Tractor Supply, but the developer. We are buying the property from Jim Byler. We are under contract and our intent is indeed to develop it as a tractor supply store in Bonner's Ferry. We've gone through our variances. They have been approved for the driveways. We are 95% finished with our architectural and civil plan set. I'm not sure what more I can add to the story that you don't already know, but here we are.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So are there any questions for the applicant? Now I will open this hearing to public testimony. Please state your name and place, residence for the record. If you have any written material, please read it into the record and present it to the commissioners, deputy clerk. I will give three minutes to respond when you want to speak. Is there anyone present who would like to speak in favor of this application?
I will.
Okay.
From the seat here is okay?
Just see, just state your name, please, and where you're.
Okay, it's Bob McKee. We live at 78 Angels Way up at Three Mile. And being in agriculture my whole life, tractor supply is an extremely valuable asset to have in the community for, for farmers and cattle. And I, there's even people I've talked to from Canada that are looking forward to come down and have that available. And the, the argument that the traffic would be a concern, I believe is easily dealt with if you have a middle turn lane that you're, which you're contemplating and the other traffic could go uncommon. And we, we live right up there near the signal at Three Mile. When that signal changes, there's always pretty good breaks before other traffic comes that will allow trucks, et cetera, to, to pull in there. And so I and others are very looking forward to tractor supply coming to our, to our community.
Present. Well, thank you. Is there anyone else that's in favor? Seeing no one else for you, we'll move on then. Is there anyone who is uncommitted on this proposal that would like to speak? Seeing them, we'll move on. Is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition of this application?
Ellen.
Uh, could you state your name, Ben?
Michelle Muir. I live in Bonner's Ferry. There are so many businesses that are going to be affected by tractor supply coming here. So many businesses that have contributed to your kids' athletics, to, we're involved with the community guard, like there's a million things that these businesses continue to support every single day, all year long. Tractor supply is a giant entity and they don't supply local. I run a youth rewards program for the company I work for and I fight against them every day because they have low prices. I support youth in agriculture and, and, and the moving forward of everything I think all of us are trying to move forward with, with, with supporting ag and, and, and everything that that means. These people don't care about any of them. They don't support it and they're after the almighty buck and pinching every penny. So your Carter Country, your Farm North, your Larson's, your every single business here is going to be affected by it? Think about that.
Okay, thank you.
You didn't catch your last name. Could you say that again?
Muir. M-U-I-R.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. Say your name, please, and residence.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Jim Hill. My wife Lynn and I live at 196 Heights Loop. We're strongly opposed to the proposed conditional use permit that would allow the established 15,000 square foot commercial structure limit to stretch to 19,200 square feet on this particular parcel, an increase of nearly 30%. on this particular parcel, an increase of nearly thirty percent. The large increase in the structure substantially understates the actual commercial square footage of over forty-five thousand that's proposed to the site, an increase of more than three hundred percent. Additionally, the portion of the site retained by the owner will have even more impact. The comprehensive plan states the purpose of the size limit, the fourteen, fifteen thousand square foot size limit, is to regulate development in a manner conducive to existing residential uses. Simply stated, this project is too big. It's too big for the site, too big for the infrastructure, too big for the adjacent residential area, too big for adequate public safety. Even the project engineer admitted that since they're required to access from Homestead Loop, so therefore the site has actually been kind of shoehorned in there, his words. This is not a development conducive to existing residential uses and poses unacceptable challenges to public safety. It appears to me the property is zoned commercial due to an overlay along US ninety-five and generally presuming access from the highway, not due to it being on Homestead Loop. It appears the property owner failed to perform due diligence before purchasing the parcel to see that access from US ninety-five is not available there. What is needed here is a reasonably sized, low-traffic-density project that facilitates transition from residential to the heavier commercial use where access is directly available farther north along ninety-five, not a gigantic high-density store on a street never intended for it. There are numerous alternatives that would be suitable and desirable for this site. Memory care and assisted living facilities are in great need. Public storage and many others would be a better fit. This is the wrong project for this site. Neighbors and taxpayers should not be penalized for the property owner's apparent misjudgment. As a former elected board member and mayor of a moderate-sized city, I understand that public safety is an overriding responsibility of public officials. The interest of public safety demands a project of this magnitude have direct access from ninety-five. This would be available somewhat to the north from this parcel or across the highway or from a dedicated commercial access route. Homestead Loop is particularly unsuitable for access to the proposed project due to narrow roadway and dangerous condition of the ninety-five intersection.
I'm sorry, that's your three minutes.
Can I save my time to him, please?
You can read the rest of his letter.
Thank you.
She just had eye surgery, so she can't read.
Oh.
So that's why she's trying to pass it on to him.
Okay.
Homestead Loop is particularly unsuitable for access to the proposed project with limited site distances and the grade with northbound vehicles, including delivery trucks crossing two lanes of traffic at the uncontrolled and uncontrollable intersection. The median intersection at Hillcrest exacerbates the danger. There are numerous conditions adverse to public safety associated with this project. Fire department challenges, including inadequate water supply and large quantities of hazardous materials on the site. Location in the airport flight center. Inadequate roadway access identified by road and bridges is not the optimum location for access for public safety, but necessitated by the oversized project proposal. Inadequate infrastructure, including forced use of an intersection already identified as dangerous with the existing traffic levels. Contrary to the statement on the application, this forty-five thousand square foot retail project will contribute significantly higher than normal traffic. To assume otherwise is to assume the venture will not be successful. The project engineer also stated he wasn't able to get the additional thirty feet of site distance normally required along Homestead from the access points because of the way the stores laid out, the way the parking's laid out, and further where the drive access would hit if, if it was at the best point for public safety. And we couldn't design it in keeping with the storm drainage and the slope of the property and the boundary line, so I hope we've done enough. This is because the proposed project is too big, everyone knows it, even the engineers. Thirty-six residential lots have already been approved directly opposite this location on Homestead. Increasing numbers of bicyclists and pedestrians already use Homestead Loop by this location every day. More are coming. Forcing them to compete with dramatically increased traffic is unsafe and not conducive to adjacent residential uses. To conclude, this project is too big for the site. It can't be supported by the infrastructure, including roads and water. It imposes an unacceptable burden on the fire district, imposes unacceptable risk to local pedestrians, bicyclists, and motorists. It's imperative that the proposed CUP on building size be denied. Residents and taxpayers must not be made to suffer because of inadequate due diligence by one landowner. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in opposition? Yes, sir. Say your name, please.
Uh, Pat Murphy, I live on Hillcrest, which is the road that's parallel with the highway going south. Um, I'd like to understand how it was determined how many traffic visits are gonna be occurring per day. When you turn off that highway, you almost immediately turn to go on Hillcrest, which, if there is somebody there wanting to turn on Hillcrest with the increased traffic coming up from, along the, uh, Homestead, if you have two cars at that intersection, three cars, excuse me, you'll be blocking, unless they stay back across the road, you'll be blocking the way that turns to Hillcrest, which has in excess of fifty homes. Couple years ago, on Google, I counted over fifty homes, plus the landfill. That's a lot of traffic. And along with the increased traffic that you would see coming from tractor supply, I just don't see that that's a good fit right there. Also, I'd like to follow up with tractor supply has shown that it does not support our local values here. Quite the opposite, if you look at that nationwide.
Yeah, you're not supposed to be derogatory towards, yeah, keep it.
Towards what?
You have to keep toward the zoning facts, the traffic information, you can't be derogatory towards the applicant.
Okay.
So just keep it to, that's why you think it doesn't work, it doesn't fit zoning.
Okay, so nationally, tractor supply has certain policies in place that apparently support certain outcomes. Let's put it that way.
What does that have to do with zoning?
Does that have anything to do with zoning?
Right, right, no. It's tractor supply, and I didn't say anything derogatory after she told me I shouldn't. I just said, look at that company.
Very odd.
Okay, and the last thing, there's a power pole right there on the corner there that a forty-eight-foot truck with traffic coming in the opposing lane would have trouble not hitting. So that's just, that's minimal compared to the rest.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes. Say your name.
Adrian Norris. I wanna let you know that my prior job was retail management, and I could tell you right now, I was actually in charge of, um, scheduling over fifty employees at one time in a big box store. I can tell you right now with their revenue, that during their peak seasons, they will receive more than one truckload, especially when you look at the necessities for straw, alfalfa, and so forth. I can also guarantee you, they will not have four employees. Especially during their peak hours. And that one time, when they're overlapping on a twelve-hour shift, there's gonna be even more people. I can guarantee you, there's gonna be more load than what they're claiming. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
It's my turn, I made it. Okay, I just have a question.
Could you state your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. Patricia Quail, like the bird. I live at sixty-four Heights Loop. And I didn't know if I could ask you when you were talking about, I had to wait until this part of the presentation. But did I understand correctly that the corporation that wants to build this facility in our area is not financially responsible for any of the road improvement? Did I understand that correctly?
Currently, right now, no. Because we don't have the information to proceed with that.
No.
Which is the county.
I'm sorry, but like.
Go ahead.
If we do not have the information to proceed with that, is that not important? Is that a, a unimportant point?
It's not unimportant, but it's not one to stop the project from going through.
Why?
Because we will address that.
No, no. We don't have anything written down that says we will address that. I, I didn't hear that.
As a county, well, as a county, we make road improvements all over the county.
Right, but someone has to pay for that.
Yes.
Now, when corporations buildings, do they not generally
Not all.
Have a financial responsibility for the roads?
In, in the past, in our county, uh, the past Commissioners, before prior my time even, by far, uh, they have not put stipulations on companies coming in because we wanted business, and so we did not, they did not do any stipulations like that. The growth and everything, and that, so that's one thing that as a board of Commissioners, we will be addressing.
Okay, so historically, no.
No.
They're not responsible for it?
Historically, the Commissioners have not put stipulations on because we wanted businesses to come in.
So if it turns out this possibility that the corporation is not to be held responsible for the improvements to the road?
We, we did hold them responsible, ma'am. With our road variance, and we made them increase the term radius and do, and other things for the site when, just window, so we, we did address that.
And, and that two feet of gravel that's going to go, what, I suspect on either side of your current roadway?
Yes.
Are they responsible for that?
We will probably, we will be doing that.
The county will be responsible for that?
No, we will be doing that. Yes, we will be, yeah, as the road and bridge.
Road and bridge will be paying for that?
Yes.
And that, that, that pocket of money comes from the homeowners, the tax, the real tax?
Ma'am, ma'am, I can inform you later on about how Roden Bridge is funded, but no, it's not.
Okay, so you're not supported by the taxpayer?
No, we, Roden Bridge does not, we do not levy for roads. So, but we do have money that comes in from the state for Roden Bridge, so.
Okay. I just didn't, I'm gonna have to pay for that, you know?
Well, you do, you do. You pay for this. It doesn't matter, we still pay for it.
Opposed? Yes? I can't see, so I.
I couldn't see you either. I'm Lisa Murphy, I live on Hillcrest Road. Um, I'm gonna just, in support of what she said, Michelle said. I grew up in Bonners Ferry, been here my, my whole life, and my dad had an appliance store and, uh, supplied appliances and did service work for years here in Bonners Ferry. And I watched the demise of my dad's business when there were certain businesses that came in, in ponderate. Basically, what he said is they were making throwaway appliances and TVs and whatnot for a price that he couldn't even buy them for. And over the course of, I'd say a span of probably ten years, my dad no longer could do what he had done his entire life, or at least his life here in Bonners Ferry. So it will have an impact on the smaller businesses that have been here for a long time that we've all appreciated because they do look at us as people and not as a dollar sign. Uh, my dad used to service the appliances that he sold. You would not find that with a bigger corporation. They don't care. They're about how much money they can glean from a community and surrounding communities. This is, and not to mention with what he stated, my husband stated, that area, it is like it's trying to be shoved in there. And I've been out, pulled out on my, from my driveway onto Hillcrest, and this is not an uncommon thing nowadays. At least eight cars on Hillcrest Road. We end up at the intersection at the same time, everybody going all different directions. I don't know how many times there have been close calls right there at that intersection. This is not a good idea for several reasons. But, I mean, it's a voice of reason, several of them. Sometimes, the almighty buck has to take a backseat to a higher level of responsibility.
Thank you.
Did I already do my three minutes? Did he say, can I take his three minutes?
Why, why we can't?
I'm gonna tell him, and then he can say it through me?
You can register as spoken for the meeting. I was just told if you could not, yeah. Is there anyone else opposed?
My name's Michael Sykes, I live at one seven four Heights Loop. Um, I've got a question, on this southern approach, they made it an additional twenty-five feet, correct?
Yes.
So is that where the semis are pulling in to go and deliver their products to the store?
Yes.
Can we pull that up on the, on the board, please? Can we zoom in a little more so everybody can see?
No, that's, that's.
Okay, so why does it show the semi coming in on the northern approach and then have to back into the dock in between Mr. Smith's house and tractor supply? They can't come around the front of the building and then have a place to turn and back into that.
That's a question the applicant can answer during rebuttal if you.
Okay, but, I mean, that, and that's only a thirty-foot radius on that northern approach. So that would need to be addressed. That semi's gonna be sitting there running while they're unloading that truck typically, and that noise is gonna go right to Mr. Smith's house, it's gonna go right to our subdivision two. That's all I gotta say.
Is there anyone else? Yes, sir.
Now, my name is Lawrence Ojemark, we live at Heights Loop. Uh, some of the concerns and questions, I guess, we would, we have, some of us have talked together and has been married by many other individuals here, is in regard to overall traffic safety and also kind of bullet points on those issues. So nobody so far has talked about, uh, snow removal and wintertime conditions for the road, but Heights Loop Road gets narrower and narrower in the wintertime, uh, and oftentimes, it's not cleared. So are there any provisions that are gonna be taking place for that to take care of that snow removal? One, for increased traffic, two, for larger tractor-trailer loads, semi, uh, trucks and things, uh, and the like, as well as where is all that snow gonna be dumped, drained? My understanding is part of it's gonna be in the corner there at ninety-five and the Heights Loop Road and Hillcrest intersection. So that would create, I would imagine, an issue because already it can be difficult in wintertime sometimes to see, uh, north of the road for making a safe turn and for those coming down to be able to see the vehicles that are making those turns. So that's a consideration and concern in regard to safety. Furthermore, it is a very narrow road, and I would imagine, uh, many people would probably take the tractor light and come down Homestead Loop Road, and if that were the case, there are some very narrow sections there that can't necessarily be widened without, uh, getting onto somebody's property, if you're right on their property line. So I'm not really sure how that would, uh, be addressed. Are you going onto people's property or you're right up at the property line, expanding the road? What considerations are there for pedestrians? I know that, that you approved a potential deal, I guess, for thirty-six or thirty-four developments. So that would be more pedestrian traffic, more personnel on the road. Something that's maybe think of and be, uh, considered for, or adjusted plans for. And, uh, I have one other piece I was kinda thinking about, slipped out of my brain. But, yeah, those, those are, those are some of the things that. But, yeah, those, those are, those are some of the things that, um, we would like to be.
Sidewalks.
Be talked about. Yeah, sidewalk, yeah, that's, that's part of the widening and, and the pedestrian concerns and considerations. Uh, but yes, snow removal, who's taking care of that? Where's that being pushed? How, how are those sight lines, you know, for all of that, um, the approaches? Not to mention, you know, um, yeah, I guess the increased traffic concerns, that would be.
Snow removal, if we could get a couple more guys for Road and Bridge to, to employ, is that would help. Um, we're a little shy there right now. Um, is there anyone else? In the opposition?
My, is it my turn?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay, alright.
Good afternoon, my name is Cameron Smith and I live at one hundred and fifty-seven Homestead Loop Road. Uh, my property is located directly north of the proposed Tractor Supply Company store. I have some serious concerns that I'd like to get addressed, uh, about the pro, or proposed project. My legal counsel has brought it to my attention that under Idaho state law in regards to zoning Title sixty-seven, property rights, or, and I'm quoting here, "Property rights, an analysis of provisions which may be necessary to ensure the land use policies. Restrictions, conditions, and fees do not violate private property rights. I want to put an emphasis on adversely impact property values or create unnecessary technical limitations on the use of the property in analysis as prescribed under the Declaration of Purpose." The proposed product, project would decrease the property values of not only my house, but any other house within the North Bench Housing area. The increased traffic would remove the ability for residents to recreate on Homestead Loop Road. I see children on a regular basis riding their bikes as well as joggers and people walking on Homestead Loop Road. The business would be an eyesore on the area and would negative, also negatively impact the value of the homes. Mr. Robertson, uh, you said, or, Mr. Roberts, you had said that the project could help with the value of my house. Uh, I purchased my house for four hundred thousand dollars and I don't know any developer that would purchase my land for two hundred thousand dollars an acre. The residents of the area do understand this, and, or, let's see here, uh... The residents of the area do understand this, and they understand that they can take legal recourse if the county chooses to move forward with the zoning project of the Tractor Supply Company store on Homestead Loop. In addition to the devaluation of the property, that, the, the homes, or, to the homes, the project is inconsistent with a conditional zoning permit citing that the comprehensive plan for Boundary Counties thirteen dash four dash three, commercial slash light industrial, those areas of Boundary County which by virtue of their location, the availability of utilities and service and of their proximity to, to a combination of road, rail, and/or air transportation are best suited for commercial and light industrial uses. Where residential development would be limited solely to the owner and caretaker's residence. I'm gonna emphasize on this. The purpose of this designation is to encourage and promote economic development in a manner conducive to existing residential uses. This project is going to change the character significantly of the area and is not conducive to the existing, or existing residential uses. Emphasis on this. Uses which could be considered appropriate and compatible with this designation include retail, light manufacturing, and service enterprises with structure not exceeding fifteen thousand square feet of ground and public service facilities. The structure that is being constructed is well over fifteen thousand square feet. Another quote from Paul at Jade Engineering is that we are having to shoehorn this building into the site. Enterprise exceeding this limit would, would could be considered as conditional or special use and development standards would include provisions not only essential to the conduct, the conduct of the business, but to mitigate adverse effects on surrounding residential development. Minimum parcel size should be sufficient to accommodate the use and subject to level of public services available. Putting in a couple trees north of the proposed store is not sufficient to minimize adverse effects into the area. Furthermore, the quote improvements would not stave off the decreased property valuation for the residents surrounding the area. Lastly, North Bench Fire District has stated that currently it does not have adequate equipment nor staffing for the current service area. Putting a forty-five thousand square foot retail space with hazardous materials is not going to help with this in the slightest.
Okay, you're, you're in your time.
During the October eighteenth, twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one Commissioners Meeting for the property that is directly west of the proposed building site of Tractor Supply Company, it was noted that the airport advised property is under Boundary County Airport traffic pattern and recommended to rezone denied on the basis of public safety, a lack of availability and fire protection and public services to the road. The Boundary County Airport is ideally situated for further, or, to further this potential by establishing low-density commercial zoning around the airport and restricting uses that are incompatible with the operation safely. Wally and Tim, you both presided over that, and that was less than eighteen months ago. So we're curious as to what has changed in the last eighteen months that changes that decision. The county is not only putting a great safety risk to the citizens that use Homestead Loop Road, Hillcrest, and Moonshadow Road, but also to the traffic that would ingress and egress from Homestead Loop on Highway ninety-five.
That, that's fine.
So do I also get some time, basically, because I was supposed to be the last rebuttal? So do you want me to just finish that now, or do you want me to just hold my thought?
Okay. You'll have a rebuttal.
Okay.
Now it's.
Do we get an answer to that question? Of what's changed?
Okay.
Yeah, we're done with opposition. We're gonna move on?
The questions that have been asked, I've wrote you down, and Jennifer's going to address those during rebuttal. Hopefully, we'll catch them all.
Can we ask more questions at this time?
No, we're done with up, the opposition.
I believe the chair has called for all remaining.
Yeah.
Those against, and the last one was Mr. Smith, so we're ready now to go to rebuttal, which is the next step.
Is the, is that where you ask questions?
No, it's the applicant's rebuttal.
No questions?
Do you allow for confusion? I think she was confused.
She, she didn't realize that, that he was gonna be the last person, she wanted to speak.
Most people in this room have never been to a hearing.
Well, as we went along, we were explaining what's going on, and, and the chair several times called. Does anybody else wishing to speak? Nobody did, and my friend, he said, "Mr. Smith, I knew he was the appellant, hadn't spoken. He was the last one to raise his hand." Now, if there's anyone who still wants to speak, well, we call them, we better go ahead and allow that opportunity, and they'll still have to rebuttal, so if there's anyone else that's saying, are there any others who are just in the opposition? That's what we are.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else in opposition?
Thank you.
So I, I just had some questions.
Well, if you would have put them in record, and we'll be able to ask the applicant to reply.
Oh, I, I, I don't have them written down.
Oh, you, you can ask.
Okay, I'm just wondering about the water. I'm Donna Short, and I'm just, I mean, I, I, there's a lot of things to say, and I know Claire Marley has been planning and zoning for Sandpoint for years. And they've had i- issues like this, expanding forward and having to push the town of Sandpoint into Ponderay for, you know, because they just get too big to fit in smaller spaces that are left, but, um, I was just wondering about the water. Where's the water coming?
That can be answered easily.
The applicant will have the opportunity, so tell me your questions, I'll write them down.
The, the septic in the water for that area, 'cause I know it's kinda. And, and if, if, if you drill a well, how much do you need for commercial? 'Cause that's kind of a, I'm just thinking about Sagal, 'cause like, I grew up there and they could never put a grocery store in on Highway ninety-five in Garfield Bay because they couldn't get enough water for fire suppression. Just reminds me of just, just questions that are going through my mind. It's not that I'm against having a nice store, it's just where it fits.
Okay, thank you.
Just water and sewer, were my questions.
Okay. If there are no, for the comments, I will close the screen.
To the rebuttal.
Let's, yeah, let's start the rebuttal of this, to Jennifer.
Okay, yes, so, um.
Jennifer, put it in the scan where you were getting it.
Gotcha, thanks. Okay, I can answer, um, some questions that have been posed. Um, the rest I will turn over to my engineers who are on the line. Um, the first one I'd like to address is the lady that just spoke. Um, we are, we have dug a well. We already know that we have water to supply the store for domestic use. For our fire suppression, we are putting a fire tank on the site because we don't have the water hookup from Three Mile for fire suppression. So, um, we are in the steps right now of having that fire tank designed. It will be onsite, it will be filled from an outside source, um, and monitored, um, for fire suppression. So we are not utilizing Three Mile water for fire suppression nor domestic water. If that answers your question.
A gallon per minute on the well?
It's not a, it's not a debate.
She's answering questions.
I'm answering the question. I answered your question. And we are using a septic system, which is currently under design, that will be onsite once it's, or tested. But Panhandle Health has our application, they reviewed it already.
Okay.
Um, as far as some of the other questions, I really think most of them are pertaining to, um, our engineering staff. So, um, would you mind reading those questions so that he can then respond?
The first one that I, this is Claire Marley for the record, just repeating the questions I heard. The first one was a question about the traffic study.
Yes.
What did you do, what did you find, what kind of traffic are we anticipating? There was a question about the thirty-foot pretty radius and how they may have to back into the site. That was when the, um, site plan was going up on the screen. Uh, what provisions have you made for loading and then loving, loading? Where is the snow gonna go? Is the snow burn gonna cause site distance impairment? Um, what effect will it have on property values? And then the very last were, how much water is needed? What have you done for septic disposal?
You didn't, my question.
Sorry?
My question was, did they falsify on the application about the amount of employees on staff? And amount of, and, and the amount of truckloads?
I did not falsify anything. I was asked how many employees at one time was gonna be onsite. Typically, it is four to five.
There's no way that, I'm sorry.
Wait, 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 wait.
You can't, you've gotta have someone in the yard, you gotta have someone on the register. Management.
I did not, I didn't write down everything you said. I wrote down everything that was a question, and that's what she's answering. We're in rebuttal now. The hearing is closed from this side, it's rebuttal now. So Chair, and everything needs to go through the chair, so.
Alright, well, if you can add my questions, thank you.
There was additional question that I had asked, actually, too.
I'm going to turn over the rest of the questions and answers to our civil engineers who are on. Okay, Paul?
Hey, yeah, good evening, this is Paul Martin, go J consulting, hopefully you can hear me okay? Okay, um, some of those comments, well, definitely Jennifer you can answer. Um, I will start with traffic. Um, I think the biggest thing to point out here, some of my comments from the previous meeting, I heard some of the words they used, basically, that were shoehorned, or misconstrued, or misunderstood, or a lot of the information was, was lost that I heard. That word that I used was simply related to the previous hearing, which was the initial driveway access. Variants, um, simply just related to the driveways. We are not allowed to access the highway, therefore, we are only allowed to access the road. We're here for a conditional use permit, conditional use for an additional four thousand square foot of building space over and above the fifteen thousand. That's really all that the hearing amounts. Um, speaking to that, related to traffic, the important thing to note here is that this business is an extremely low trip generator. It has its own land use code and the I T E. Uh, look, that report, uh, showed no recommendations, no improvements necessary. My discussion with I T D on those conditions that they placed, and that Road and Bridge talked about, sounds like all those are going to be resolved. So that would be extent of I T D's requirement for improvement for the site. Uh, the traffic study states that, and like I said, it's a very low trip generator. So all this talk about additional square footage, additional size, the whole reason why we're here for this is simply based on the size of the building, which has been a much too tiny. And my comment is that the, the traffic is extremely low for this use. The driveway comments about the truck circulation, we were required by the variance to have a fifty-five foot radius. Purpose of that radius was so that we could get the truck in without merging into oncoming traffic on Homestead. That has been resolved. The truck will enter the site that direction. Um, one comment was about maneuverability on site. Uh, the truck will pull past the ramp and will back up to the ramp. And then be unloaded. Uh, I can't speak directly as to whether the truck will be shut off, but I'm sure that's something that Jennifer can discuss with them. If that is a concern, I don't see why that would be a problem. The truck will unload from the ramp, and then the truck will exit via the north driveway. Uh, there was not a condition to increase the radius on the north driveway because of the vehicle tracking that we show shows that that truck did not impact that radius. So, yes, the radius is smaller, but because of the geometry, and I wish I could show you on AutoCAD, because, and if you watch a truck operating on the right turn, that's why when the trucks, you see them on the highway, they say, you know, careful on the right side, that it's sweeping wide to the right. It's because that right turn takes up more space. That's why we added the fifty-five foot radius for the right turn into the site. That additional radius was not required on the north. That is my understanding of most of the questions that were asked, is there anything specifically that was asked that I need to try to answer as well?
Snow storage and snow burn.
No, okay, so you're looking, I mean, the pond itself can be used for snow storage. Um, does the county have a regulation that we need to meet for snow storage? Are we talking about onsite? 'Cause when I heard snow stor, snow storage earlier, it sounded like people were talking about the concerns for storage from the road.
No.
What was the concern?
Their concern was that the snow would be piled high enough that you would cause a site distance issue. You wouldn't be able to see over the burns.
That's assuming that the snow would all be pushed to our driveway, I guess. I, I, I wouldn't expect that anybody would do that. Um, the snow can be pushed to different areas onsite, can be stored at different locations so that there wouldn't be a site distance issue. I heard site distance mentioned earlier when I was talking about, oh, I think I heard my own words repeated uh, when we were talking about the distance that we couldn't meet. Um, so, you know, I, I, we got that approval, and I, I don't see the snow storage as being a, a concern. We can pick a specific location on site if the county would like, and we can indicate that as snow storage. Um, that's, that's something that we can do, no problem.
Uh, septic tank drain field, uh, what do you need? And do you have the proper soils to be able to accommodate the site?
Jennifer, what's the most recent update from our septic designer? Um, I know that he's seen the site, and we will obtain the, the proper permits for that septic system.
Yeah, Panhandle Health, as I stated earlier, Panhandle Health has the application, and they're going for their test pits on, on Thursday. Um, so at this point, Panhandle Health does not have any objection.
That's all you have? I guess, we'll move to Cameron. Would you like to chat in on this?
For Road and Bridge?
Yes.
So this is Renee Nelson for Road and Bridge, just to clarify, I have several of the questions as well. The various was for the location on Homestead Loop for the two approaches. It was not for site distance. They all, both, uh, locations had three hundred feet of site distance for the road standards ordinance twenty twenty dash two. The location on a minor collector is three hundred and thirty feet apart. The thirty feet is what that three hundred foot one was missing. So it was not that there was not clear site distance. And then I would also like to clarify on I T D's, um, email that they sent. They did state on that email, and again to us, that those were only their recommendations. Those were not requirements that they were imposing. The requirement that they imposed was denying the approach off of the highway, hence that property to be accessed would come off of Homestead Loop. So those were just any recommendations that they could help us with, and part of them are actually going to be ongoing.
I still didn't get my question answered. Well, typically, when a retail comes into an area, they take, they take in account on statistics on population, the average salary in the area, and that lets them know what kind of store, what size of a store they should, um, build. Um, I, I know they have the statistics at hand. I know they have the statistics at hand and I do not believe that's aligned and I believe they falsified.
You didn't ask that question.
No, I believe they falsified on their documents.
We're not going to go there.
Really?
We're not going to go there.
But if this application was falsified on.
We're not talking about that. We're talking about whether.
So stay on target, right?
Yes, yes.
Right?
That's why.
No, I understand, but they did a falsify.
Yeah, I feel like you're out of order with that.
That's fine.
I guess we'll go with Cameron.
How long do I have?
What?
How long do I have?
You have ten minutes left.
All right, cool. So I guess I'm gonna reread this just because it's for continuity since I have ten minutes. Well, actually, I got a couple of questions here too. So my understanding is that there's another proposed site for this location, another residence, basically. I know there's some opposition for the Tractor Supply Store, but the county, the Tractor Supply can go to a different location and build this, and that's fine. What we're basically saying is that this particular location is a problem. So I'll finish out, I guess, my little duration or a couple of things and lots of other questions to follow up. So during the October eighteenth twenty twenty-one commissioners meeting for the property, for the property that's directly west of the proposed building site for Tractor Supply Company, it was noted that the airport advised under its, or under Boundary County Airport traffic pattern and recommended the rezone to be denied on the basis of public safety. A lack of availability of fire protection and public services to the road. The Boundary County Airport is ideally situated to further this potential by establishing low-density commercial zoning around the airport and restricting uses that are incompatible with the airport operation and safety. In addition, the Airport Commission had concerns about large groups of people congregating beneath those areas. These same concerns were present for the Tractor Supply Company store. Both Wally and Tim were in that meeting. They signed it. What has changed in the last eighteen months that would absolve any of these concerns from your previous ruling? The county is not only putting a great safety risk to the citizens that use Homestead Loop Road, Hillcrest, and Moonshadow Road, but also to the traffic that would ingress and egress out of Homestead Loop Road on Highway ninety-five. To add insult to injury, because there has not been a traffic study to demonstrably show that this project would most certainly cause traffic and safety issues, they are sticking to taxpayers with a financial liability in the event of an accident or worse, a loss of life. The engineer on the phone, Jade, from Jade Engineering during the approach variance said the hot quote, "The Highway ninety-five and Homestead Loop is a very dangerous intersection." That's a quote. We have a recording of that. Why is the county choosing to ignore the blatant safety and financial liabilities that would be incurred by moving forward with this project? In closing, this project is not only going to be a bane to the residents of North Bench, but to the residents of Boundary County. I understand that progress and growth is coming, but I would implore the county to recognize that there's a right in time or right time and place for everything. The construction of the Tractor Supply Company store is not well-suited for the Homestead Loop Road and Highway ninety-five intersection. This was reinforced by the engineer at Jade Engineering when he stated, and I'm paraphrasing, the project was shoehorned in. If the engineer that designed the building is raising this much concern, how does the county do not share the same concern? So the well only gets three gallons per minute. All right? How is that gonna be enough for everything to do? In addition to that, what is the minimum amount of fire retardant that they're gonna have? And to go back, basically, there's a mailer that went out from our North Bench Fire District stating that they don't have enough resources right now, volunteerism is down, and that they're basically asking for more support. Again, you're gonna come to the taxpayer and do all this. If you want to basically resolve any of the issues with pedestrian travel, that means you need to put in sidewalks. Or you also need to put in expansion on the road. Well, who's gonna pay for that? Us? So. Oh, oh, yeah, that's the state, which is still funded by us, right? Unless there's a, so. The other thing is that the well during the summer, because they dug basically during the spring thaw, had only three gallons per minute, and they went 500 feet below the river. There's a chance that thing's gonna go dry, so what are they gonna do for potable water? Isn't that an OSHA problem? I'll go on. The application inconsistencies. Yes, I called Old Town, which is the same size. They have fifteen employees there at all times. So four employees, that's a, that's a load. The application does state there is gonna be seventy to ninety retail business. Probably that's modest, depending with all the traffic coming in from Canada, okay? Again, all that's egressing and egressing onto Highway ninety-five. If you're to do a traffic study, you probably figure out you can't put any more traffic devices there. The state's not gonna get envened because it's not technically the road, it's the county's department. But what we're really concerned is that there is gonna be a loss of life because of the lack of planning. And then who's gonna pay for that? Because the county's gonna get sued. Right? So fire concerns, again, what kind of chemicals are gonna be used for fire retardants? If they have a nineteen thousand square foot building that decides to burn down, because someone backs a, one of the machinery into somewhere they're not supposed to, they run through all of that, then North Bench, they don't have adequate fire suppression. How's that gonna work out? How much of a liability are you guys willing to accept for that? Because this is on you. This is your decision right now. Let's see here. So Mr. Burling, you brought up in a previous conversation that the approach variance might, the Homestead Loop might need to be rethought. What'd you mean by that? How does the county envision dealing with the traffic issues the project introduces in conjunction with other commercial residential developments taking place? We can't have this be done in a vacuum. There's a lot of other developments taking place on Highway ninety-five right now. Okay, yeah. So what did you mean by that, Mr. Burling?
That they need to be.
Well, we can't, we can't consider this in a vacuum though.
This is a hearing.
Okay. All right, well, I think that's pretty much everything that I, oh, the other thing is, there's no fire hydrants by this place. So if there's no fire hydrants, and again, is a taxpayer just on the loop for everything? The liability, the, all of that? Okay.
At this point in time, do they have any rebuttal?
The last, the rebuttal.
Yes, do you want rebuttal?
Only what you just said.
But it's only to what you have said. Sure, I'm actually not going to address most of what he said because I've been here before. I would like to, we had a traffic study done by the works. We had it done last July and it stated no improvements were needed. As part of the record, feel free to look it up. I have a Tractor Supply usage statement that they put out. It's on their website. Feel free to go there and look at it. Average number of employees. Tractor Supply Store employs one full-time manager, one part-time manager, and between four to six part-time store associates. This is put out by Tractor Supply themselves. Please feel free to go and check names. I don't falsify documents. That's what I'd like to say.
Sounds like more than four. If I do the math right, that's six to eight right there.
Yep.
So you did falsify it.
This is a.
Okay, well, we could have hoped to ask when we hear it. Your job is to serve the public, not special interests, and so I suggest you start doing that.
If there are no further comments, I will close this hearing to additional testimony and call forward these.
Did you just say no further comments? So there is time for comments?
We've already done the rebuttal.
Oh, I'm so confused. Sorry, your statement.
And I'll come forward decision amongst the members.
Yes, because I want you to write it down in your report.
I have no problems. I'll say there's unfortunate timing in the order of this process. And if it could have been done, you know, if there was an error the first time, it was meeting with him, you know, that's unfortunate. That's just a statement.
And I'll make a statement of the fact that we, as the board of commissioners, we did not even have to have this agreement, that we did. Also, if this building was 15,000 square feet, we definitely would not be here either. And so, and that's what I'll state is that.
As far as moving forward, you know, a lot of talk today of impact fees and that sort of thing, but if we don't have it built into our ordinance now, I don't feel that it's our obligation to enforce it at this point.
I agree with that. Well. With that, I would like to call in a motion.
I move to approve the conditional use permit for commercial use with primary structures exceeding 15,000 square feet to allow Retail Tractor Supply Store file number twenty-two dash zero one eight three and direct staff to prepare written findings, a decision, and terms and conditions of approval. Finding that proposal is in accord with standards of Idaho Code Section Seven of Boundary County zoning and subdivision ordinance. Based on the findings, conclusions, and conditions written in amendment, this action does not result in taking a private property. Draft findings one through sixteen with amending number eight to state private wells that have Three Mile Water District and draft conditions of approval one through eight.
We have a motion.
Sorry.
Is that pre-written?
Steen.